Thank you all very much, and thank you all for joining us tonight on Zoom. This is still a fairly new format for us, and we ask folks to be patient with us as we learn to navigate how to do council meetings using electronics for everybody. We will, though, it is the top of the order. And David, are you ready with the visual? So the top of the order is generally the Pledge of Allegiance. And last time, we couldn't figure out how to do it right. But we're going to go ahead and go to a live shot of the flag, and I would invite everyone who is watching to stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. All right, thank you all very much. Special orders of business, there is nothing on the agenda tonight. However, with the council's indulgence, I would like to add a special tribute tonight. We received word last week that the Chair of the Kaiser Points of Interest Committee, Jill Bonney-Hill, has passed away. She was an absolutely delightful individual who made a real difference in our community. And I just wanted to read a couple of things so we can honor and thank her for her, honor her memory, be thankful for the work that she did, and let everybody know what a special person that she was for us and that we will very much miss her. Debbie Lockhart wrote this and sent it to her family. Jill was an amazing person, as tiny as she was in stature. She was gigantic in all she did for the Points of Interest Committee. She started out as a volunteer in the Thomas Dove Kaiser Dedication Ceremony and connected with the Points of Interest Committee after the ceremony, after that, in 2009. The list of projects the committee did during that time boggles the mind. And I give her credit for all of them because through her leadership, the committee persevered and brought the projects to completion. I, for one, will miss her terribly, Mark, and I extend my sincerest condolences to you for your loss of such a special lady. To let people know just some of the things that Jill Bonney-Hill accomplished through the Points of Interest Committee and her leadership, they would include the Points of Interest map and website pages, the Charles McNary Memorial at McNary Golf Course, the flood history signs at Kaiser Rapids Park, Japanese history influence at the Ryan J Hill Memorial Park, the Marie Dorian kiosk at the Ryan J Hill Memorial Park, a lesser marker for a significant donation claim at Cummings and River Road, the Geocash, which ran for many years, and the Kaiser Points of Interest Facebook page. Underway right now was the informational signage for the Kaiser Schoolhouse, where the Kaiser Cultural Center is now located. It's volunteers like Jill Bonney-Hill that make a difference in our community. Through her quiet leadership, her inquisitive mind, her indomitable spirit, we were definitely changed and blessed for Jill Bonney-Hill's volunteerism and her involvement in the community. So to her family, we extend our deepest condolences and our thanks for the work that she did for Kaiser. Is there anybody who would like to add to that for Jill Bonney-Hill? So I would encourage people to watch for the posting in the Kaiser Times for additional services. Councilor Herrera, I saw your hand. Okay, can you hear me? Councilor Herrera? Yes, Councilor Herrera.
Yeah, I just want to add that I just like the video.
Your sound is cutting in and out.
I just want to add that you're being led on for the Points of Interest. How do you do the volume?
There you go.
I'm watering. Must be muted.
I can hear you now.
Can you now? Can you hear me? Can you hear me or not?
I can hear you, Roland. You are cutting in and out a little bit with your signal.
Okay. I just wanted to add that you're being led on for the Points of Interest.
Well, if I can refresh your Zoom browser, your...
You know, even with... Make sure we're to the meetings, and I appreciate all the... Thank you, that's fine.
All right, thank you very much, Roland. And David will work offline here and get you refreshed, okay? Mr. Brown, I see your hand up, sir. Okay, no? Don't put your hand down then. All right, anyone else? All right, thank you very much. That takes us to committee reports, and we didn't receive anything electronically for committees have not been meeting, to my knowledge, except for the charter review. And we will get to that later on in our agenda as we talk about, as we give our reports. Public testimony, we don't have anybody here, and I don't have anybody who has signed up. Is there anybody who has wanted to log on Zoom? Okay, nobody contacted. That information for people who would like to do, participate via Zoom for public participation can do so with advance notice by getting ahold of Tracy Davis, our city recorder. So we encourage people to check the website and check the agenda so we can be including everybody who would like to participate. Of course, email is always welcome, and we will read that into the record in its entirety, something we sometimes don't always do, but we will during these circumstances to make sure that your voice is fully heard. All right, that will then take us to our first public hearing. So I'm going to open the public hearing, hopefully without deafening people this time. This is for item 7A, the liquor license change of ownership, common country lanes, the new owner, Brothers of Valor, city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On April 6, 2020, the city received an application for a change of ownership of the liquor license at Town and Country Bowl located at 3,500 River Road North in Kaiser, Oregon. The application is for a limited on-premises license. The new owner is Brothers of Valor. As required by Kaiser ordinance, a public hearing was scheduled, notice was published and mailed to all property owners within 200 feet of the establishment. The Kaiser Police Department reports a clear background check on the applicant and has no reason for recommending denial of the application. In addition, the Kaiser Community Development Department finds the location of the establishment to be properly zoned and had no additional comment on the application. It is recommended the public hearing be opened to allow testimony from the applicant or other interested individuals, and upon completion, that the hearing be closed. It is further recommended the council recommend approval of the application for Brothers of Valor under the guidelines as established by ORS 471.178 and the ordinances of the City of Kaiser, and then the recommendation will be forwarded to the Oregon Liquor Control Commission for their approval. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Epley. Are there any questions on the staff report? Councilor Cole?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I attended the open house or the groundbreaking ceremony, so to speak, for the new facility there. And one of the things that they talked about was how it was going to be a youth center. How does that go along with the liquor license?
Well, my understanding, Counselor, is that the youth center will be in the upstairs portion of the building, and then the liquor license will be serving the lower part of the building, which they're going to maintain as a bowling alley.
Okay, that was just one of my questions. I just didn't quite understand that.
I had the same question. Thank you for asking.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions on the staff report? I do have one. There were, the name was spelled two ways, and in the staff report, it was clear that it was Brothers, plural, of Valor, which matches the Secretary of State listing. I went and looked it up. So there were a couple of places on the application where it said Brother, singular, but the official name for the motion is that it is Brothers of Valor. I just wanted to make sure that was clear. Any other comments or questions on the staff report? I have no public testimony that has been submitted or has here present to sign up, so with that, nope, okay. Close the public hearing. Council President Freeman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt the application for Brothers of Valor under the guidelines as established by ORS 471.178 and the ordinances of the City of Kaiser, and also forward this recommendation to the Oregon Liquor Control Commission for final approval.
It has been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council accept the recommendation for the, sorry, that the council recommend approval of the application for the Brothers of Valor under the guidelines as established by ORS 471.178 and the ordinances of the City of Kaiser, and forward this recommendation for approval to the Oregon Liquor Control Commission. Any further discussion? All in favor? That's right, we're going to do roll call. Ms. Davis?
Mayor Clark?
Aye.
Council President Freeman?
Aye.
Counselor Herrera?
Aye.
Counselor Kohler?
Aye.
Counselor Parsons?
Aye.
Counselor Reed?
Aye.
Counselor Smith?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion passes unanimously. That takes us to item 7B, Resolution Authorization for Supplemental Budget, General Fund, Non-Departmental Resources and Non-Departmental Requirements. Mr. Johnson, do we need to do these separately, or can we do them in block?
I believe you need to do them separately, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Wood, appreciate that. All right, we'll start off with that one then. So this is open the public hearing for supplemental budgets, city manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Wood?
Madam Mayor, City Council, tonight I have four budget adjustments for you to consider. The first two are related to each other. They're related to the community or the Intergovernmental Agreement or Community Prosperity Initiative. As we talked about the last city council meeting, Marion County is giving the city $15,000 this year, plus for the next two years, $15,000 additional dollars each year, for a total of $45,000. At the last meeting, we approved moving forward with providing forgivable loans to qualified businesses in Kaiser. These two adjustments are to move the money around so that we can spend that during this current fiscal year. The first entry is to recognize the current $15,000 we'll receive this year and appropriate that amount. The second entry is to borrow $30,000 from the Community Development Fund, which has appropriations that they will not be using this year. Then, as we receive the money in the future years, we'll reimburse the Community Development Fund. And with that, is there any questions on the first two supplemental budgets?
I'm not seeing any hand raises for the first two items, so can we do these two together?
Yes, I believe you could do those two together.
All right. So was there any public testimony submitted for these two items?
No, there was not.
Okay, no public testimony has been submitted. There is no one present that wishes to testify. Is there any, are there any further questions on the staff report? Okay, so, are these separate public hearings or one public hearing for all of the supplemental budgets?
I stand corrected. I believe you can do one public hearing for all of them, but each resolution will need to be voted on separately.
Okay. So let's then proceed to these two other supplemental budgets. So we'll hear those, and then we'll do the motions. Counselor President Freeman, you had a question or comment?
Thank you, yeah, so for the first two that we're combining, it's the first one that has the $30,000, correct? That takes care of the first two resolutions, because there isn't one for $15,000 unless I'm missing it. Oh, there it is. Sorry, 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 I found it.
Okay.
The two-sided paper is getting me my paper packet, so I have it. I apologize.
All right, we're good. Let's go ahead and then get the presentation on the third and fourth ones, and then we'll see if there's any public testimony that will go with those and proceed from there. Mr. Wood?
The third supplemental budget, this is just a correction of an error. The bank had been working off a different amortization schedule than we had, so this is a catch-up payment to get all of our schedules correct. So we are moving $3,000 from the contingency item within the street fund to the debt service line item within the street fund. So just a catch-up correction. The fourth entry is related to our utility billing. As many of you know, we implemented a new online bill pay system this year. It's actually caught on quite well, especially with the COVID-19 crisis. We're seeing a significant ramp up in people paying through the online bill pay as opposed to bringing in cash or mailing in checks. So with that increase in activity, we are seeing increases in third-party processing fees, which also include credit card fees. So this entry is to move $20,000 out of contingency within the Administrative Services Fund and move it to the utility billing line item within the Administrative Services Fund. And with that, if you have any questions?
Okay, any questions on the third supplemental budget? And did we receive any public testimony regarding that one? None there. Okay, the fourth resolution, the supplemental budget for Administrative Services Fund. Oh, I see a hand up. Mr. Counselor Kohler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So Mr. Wood was, did I hear you say that we needed to put $20,000 into that fund to cover our fees and such that we're, you're saying that it's costing us $20,000 to use the online payment?
We are seeing a significant increase in the usage, and that's the combination of the more easily accessible online bill pay system, also people not willing to come into the office anymore.
Okay, Counselor Kohler, you muted yourself. Were you done? Counselor Kohler?
Yes, I was talking to myself. My, I was saying 20 grand is a lot of fees.
It is a lot of fees. We bill a lot of revenue each month through our utility system.
So in terms of percentages, if I recall correctly, that when we went to the online bill pay, we did have fees. The flip side was that it also increased staff efficiency, and there was a cost savings there.
That is correct.
Okay. Any other questions or comments regarding the online bill pay? And that would be Counselor Reed?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Following up kind of on what Counselor Kohler was saying, are there any plans to adjust fees to accommodate those charges? Or are we just absorbing those as part of doing business?
At this point, they would typically be rolled into our annual increase in water, stormwater, sewer rate increases. But again, this year, once we get to the Budget Committee, as I've previously indicated, we're not going to be looking at increasing any of those fees at this point. So to answer your question, yes, we will be absorbing them for the immediate future, and the impact will be somewhat of a slowdown in capital outlay type of projects. We're intentionally doing this as part of one of the methods of relief that we can provide to the residents of Kaiser during the COVID-19 pandemic.
Okay. Any other questions? And on this fourth supplemental budget, did we receive any public testimony? All right, thank you. Any further comments or questions? So I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Council President Freeman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R 2020, authorizing, authorization for supplemental budget, general fund, non-departmental resources and non-departmental requirements for $15,000, and approval of Resolution R 2020 for authorization of supplemental budget, general fund, non-departmental resources and non-departmental requirements in the amount of $30,000.
It has been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R 2020, Authorization for Supplemental Budget, General Fund, Non-Departmental Resources and Non-Departmental Requirements for $15,000, and Resolution R 2020, Authorization for Supplemental Budget, General Fund, Non-Departmental Resources and Non-Departmental Requirements. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Johnson, you have your hand up. Attorney Johnson? Oh, unmute, Mr. Johnson.
Sorry about that. I was just going to comment, I agree with Mr. Wood, you need to do separate votes on these. If you don't want to do the roll call, if there's no objection, as long as the city recorder can record the proper votes, you can skip the roll call, but I would agree with Mr. Wood on the separate votes.
Very well. Let's go ahead and amend the motion to the first Authorization for Supplemental Budget, General Fund, Non-Departmental Resources and Non-Departmental Requirements for $15,000 as a friendly amendment. Is that accepted by the mover?
Yes.
Accepted by the second?
Amendmented, yes.
All right.
Amendmented, yes.
So the motion has been amended to only be the first of the four resolutions? Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying, tell you what, is there, are there any objections? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. All right, Council President Freeman?
We're going back to the $30,000, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R 2020, Authorization for Supplemental Budget, General Fund, Non-Departmental Resources and Non-Departmental Requirements in the amount of $30,000.
Thank you, ma'am.
It has been moved and, thank you, it has been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R 2020, Authorization for Supplemental Budget, General Fund, Non-Departmental Resources and Non-Departmental Requirements for $30,000. Any further discussion? Are there any opposed? Hearing none, the motion has passed unanimously. Does that go to work? To do it that way, Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Okay. Counselor President Freeman, the third one, please.
I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R 2020, Authorization for Supplemental Budget, Street Fund in the amount of $3,000.
Thank you, ma'am.
It has been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R 2020, Authorization for Supplemental Budget, Street Fund in the amount of $3,000. Any further discussion? Are there any opposed? Hearing none, I declare that the resolution is passed unanimously. The fourth resolution, Council President Freeman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R 2020, Authorization for Supplemental Budget, Administrative Services Fund in the amount of $20,000.
Okay, it is, okay. It has been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R 2020, Authorization for Supplemental Budget, Administrative Services Fund in the amount of $20,000. Is there any further discussion? Are there any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. That will conclude our public hearings for this evening. That will take us to administrative action, and the item 8A is an ordinance amending Kaiser Development Code, Section 2.203, permitted uses generally, and Section 2.312, yard and lot standards, amending ordinance 98-389. City manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City Attorney Johnson?
Thank you, Chris, Madam Mayor and Council. This matter came before the council at the April 20 meeting. After public hearing, council directed us to prepare an ordinance adopting the changes, these are changes to the development code with regard to the chicken and ducks, and also with regard to yard and lot standards with fences and hedges, and is before you tonight for adoption. And Madam Mayor, I would recommend a roll call vote on the ordinance.
Very well. Okay, we have two hand raised. Counsel President Freeman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm sorry, I didn't raise my hand, but I suppose I did, so I apologize for that.
No problem, it means I'm watching my screen. Mr. Brown? You have your hand up? No? Okay. Any questions or comments on the staff report? Okay, Counsel President Freeman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt a bill for an ordinance amending Kaiser Development Code regarding Section 2.203, permitted uses generally, and Section 2.312, yard and lot standards, amending ordinance 98-389.
I second that.
It has been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt a bill for an ordinance, 2020, amending Kaiser Development Code regarding Section 2.203, permitted uses generally, and Section 2.312, yard and lot standards, amending ordinance 98-389. City Recorder, would you please call the roll for the vote?
Mayor Clark?
Aye.
Counsel President Freeman?
Aye.
Counselor Herrera?
Please.
Counselor Kohler?
Aye.
Counselor Parsons?
Aye.
Counselor Reed? Counselor Smith?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. That takes us to the consent calendar. Counsel President Freeman, would you please read the items on tonight's consent calendar?
Sure, we have two items tonight on the consent calendar. Item 9A is the Kaiser Police Department report on disbursement of petty cash funds fiscal year 2019, 2020, and item 9B is approval of the April 20, 2020 city council regular session minutes.
Thank you very much. Are there any pulls? I see no hands going up. Counsel President Freeman?
I move that the Kaiser City Council approve the consent calendar, items 9A and B.
The consent calendar, oh, there we go, thank you. Sorry, Counselor Herrera. It has been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopted the consent calendar. All in favor would, boy, that's a habit. Are there any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. That takes us to liaison reports. David, can you work with Counselor Herrera so we can... David, can you work with Council Herrera so we can hear his report clearly? Council Herrera, would you text with Mr. Dolly so we'll be able to hear your report clearly? I would like to make sure that people can hear you, and right now you're still cutting in and out a lot. Would that be okay? Thank you.
I wonder if he called me and I could play this audio through my phone into this speaker.
That would, that might work. Council Herrera, would you be able to call David Dolly and maybe we can get your audio that way? I'd like people to be able to hear your report clearly. Would that work, okay?
You cannot hear me right now, is that what you're saying?
Uh, your, your connection is cutting in and out.
Yeah, I'm calling him right now.
Okay.
We'll go through this telephone.
Okay.
Tell us something else then.
All right, I will. Um, so David's going to call you so we can hear your report clearly. And so, let's see, um, I will go then to Councilor Smith.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, so, big thing for me in the last couple of weeks, actually the last month, has been working together with our Charter Review Committee. And the Charter Review Committee has finalized the doc, well, we haven't finalized it, our city attorney, Mr. Johnson, has put the document together that will now be voted on tomorrow by the, by the group to move forward to the City Council for further review and then, uh, you know, getting it out to the community where we're going to all need to work together to do that. I, it has basically been cleaned up, and I actually saw the, the, the draft of it. And if you haven't had a chance, take a look at it, it is so much easier to read than the old one. And none of the components of how our city is set up are being changed. Nothing about, uh, we, we decided to move forward with the main goal that this council set forth, which was to remove Article forty-four. Now, there's a lot of people that are watching online and stuff that are unaware of what Section forty-four is. So this is a quick recap so that people start to hear about it and understand, because this will go before the voters. Uh, Section forty-four was voted in, it was not promoted by the city or anything, but a group that, uh, put it out there in, I believe, it was nineteen ninety-three. And it prohibits a minority status for homosexuality. It is something that is legally unenforceable and does need to be on the charter anymore. This group of councilors made this as one of our goals, so therefore we have worked very hard with a group of citizens to clean up the charter and put this forth, uh, to get it ready to go to, before the voters. So as people start to hear about this, I would just encourage and ask, uh, people to, to, you know, really dig in, to understand what we're doing, understand we're not changing anything as to how the city runs unless that becomes part of the public conversation as it gets to council. But we are going to get this put away permanently and move on being the, the type of city that we are, and that is a city that there's not any room for hate. So, very excited about it, and I know, uh, Councilor Free, President Freeman, and I have both really been impressed with the work that has been done by the citizens and our city attorneys. So, that's pretty much all I have right now. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilor Smith, and I want to thank both you and Council President Freeman and all the members of the Charter Review Committee for a tremendous amount of work that's gone into the detail, looking at our charter line by line, and the great help and guidance of our city attorney, Shannon Johnson. Uh, this was a major undertaking to be thorough and thoughtful, and we are going to continue the process. I believe you have one more meeting coming up Tuesday, tomorrow night?
Wow, yeah. Yep, and that's when they'll vote on it to send off to the council, and then we'll have some additional, I'm sure, uh, public meetings and input before we put it out to the voters.
That's correct. That will, uh, the recommendation will come to City Council, and as I recall, then the recommendation will be reviewed by and heard by the City Council before the final ballot title is adopted. So, there's still more discussion that can be had and will be had, but I think it's important for folks to know how this is progressing because it is an important document for the governance of our city. So thank you all for the nine people that have put a lot of time in for the review for the charter. All right, um, are we good to go with Council Herrera, or shall I go to the next one?
Roland, unmute your, you want to mute him, but this is moderator, he's, uh, like, I'm just testing. See his microphone?
I do. Okay. I'm trying to hit unmute. Come on! Maybe we're fighting. Unmute audio. Yeah, it won't. Oh, there we go. Nope. Okay, Council Herrera, unmute. Maybe? I think we were both trying at the same time.
Roland? Just give your report here. Yeah, we can hear you, just, just speak into your phone and I'll put it through.
Okay, we'll, we'll go on, all right. We'll keep working on it. Uh, we want to make sure we hear from you, sir. Okay, um, Council Parsons?
Um, I really haven't done anything but stay home. Um, I will have a virtual, um, board meeting with the chamber next week, and that's, and then we have budget next week, and that's about all we have. So Monday, Tuesday, budget, Wednesday, I have chamber. And I, I am officially retired for the really last time. I'll never work again, just so everybody knows, every day is Saturday. Thank you.
Congratulations on retiring, Councilor Parsons, and we wish you very well in this next attempt at the, uh, the big R. The, the betting pool's open. All right, uh, Council Reed?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I got to attend the Latinos in Action, uh, Inacción Scholarship Presentation, which was a very interesting way to do it this year. A huge thanks to Pastor Dominguez and Councilor Herrera and, um, the, uh, um, their, their, their committee, it was a fantastic labor of love for all involved. And twenty young people received these scholarships, and it meant a great deal to them, and we tried to make it as special as we could as we were, um, as they drove up and received their scholarships in perfectly socially, um, distanced and acceptable ways. So thank you all for figuring out how to make that work. That was really a fantastic event. Um, I was listening on the League of Oregon Cities, uh, city conference call with the governor as far as talking about, um, the next steps as far as our recovery, and, uh, still way too many unknowns to get really excited about anything, but, um, but it was a good attempt at some, at some communications and, uh, some, some vital things are still missing from the plan. Probably top of the list is any mental health considerations as, um, as I'm sure we'll, we'll, we'll hear more from. But, uh, that, that was an interesting experience with, with, uh, just hearing that information. Been really busy with, uh, trying to get distance learning happening and going on. Um, still a lot of kids not as engaged as we'd like to see them. It's been a lot of, um, communicating with parents and pushing and pulling and prodding and begging kids to do things. Um, but on the other hand, there are many who are, are very dedicated and who are doing a really good job of getting things in. So, um, huge thank you to all the parents and all the teachers and administrators and our, our district people, just making this happen as easily as we can in this very difficult, uh, challenging situation. Uh, on top of that, we are trying to move back into the building of McNary Building after, uh, after construction, so we all had to go in and pack up our rooms, and so just throw that in on top of the party, and, you know, so, so that's happening, but they are all on schedule, uh, the construction's on schedule, and, um, we will be starting next year, uh, fingers crossed, back in our building as usual, so that's, that's an exciting prospect. And then this Thursday, I am involved, or I, I've been invited to the, the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast with the, the Chamber of Commerce, and I'm really excited to be a part of that, and, uh, so that's coming up on Thursday. And then, of course, we have budget season, so that is what is on my agenda for now. Everything else has been canceled. The Southeast Kaiser Neighborhood Association will reconvene in fall. Um, the Stormwater Committee meeting will, um, try again in June, and so everything else is being postponed, but we're, we're still in business, so I appreciate everybody's efforts in that respect. I'm done.
All right, thank you very much, and we wish you and all of your fellow teachers and the students all the best with the distance learning. I know it's been a steep learning curve, no pun intended, for everybody, but I'm, uh, I hope that everybody perseveres because it's going to be worth it to not only get the education, but also to, um, learn a lot about how to use this technology, hopefully for the benefit in the future. I did walk, uh, around the McNary site, and it's really wonderful to see that coming together, so.
Oh, and also, the, the paving, paving on Delight Street is delightful, and so that is really exciting to have that up and running, and we've been wanting that for so long, and uh, that, that's an excellent addition, so thank you, Public Works people, for making that happen, and, um, everybody involved with that.
I would absolutely agree, it's a beautiful project, it is, uh, looks pretty much done, I think there's a couple of cones here and there, but that's about it, and it looks wonderful. And the other evening, when I was out walking the dog after a rain shower, I was able to walk along there and not get muddy. It was really nice. So in the fall, when the students are walking, uh, to and from school in a place that is going to be paved, easy to see, and easy to navigate, um, I'm really excited we got this done. So yes, thank you, Public Works Department, and everybody who was involved with that project. Councilor Kohler, can I go to you?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a few things. I've been involved in the last two weeks with the, uh, League of Oregon Cities, uh, recording with the, the governor's staff, and that's been very interesting, but like Council Reed said, there's a lot of things that seems like it changes every ten minutes, and it's hard to really keep up on things. Uh, it's the way that the governor has proposed that we open up Oregon is really, really confusing, and I don't know that any of it's obtainable, so hopefully that we can get some things worked out on that and, uh, get people back to work. I've also attended chamber greeters for a couple of weeks, and that's all been done with Zoom, and, uh, that's, it's been fun to, to see people like we're seeing each other right now and hearing things, so, uh, businesses, I, I encourage you to participate with the Zoom. I've been in contact with several businesses, uh, in person on the, the grant or the loan that the city is offering, and, and, uh, hopefully Mr. Brown will give us a, a report on how many people have applied for that, uh, when he reports, but it's, I think it's been positively, uh, received by those that I've talked to. The Traffic Safety Bike Pit Committee and the Claguer Creek Watershed Council have both been, uh, counseled for this week. And, uh, next week, of course, is our Budget Committee Meetings, looking forward to that. And then, uh, the last thing I just wanted to comment on was, uh, I made a request to Mr. Lawyer about the Park Meadow Access to River Road coming from Park Meadow, and he did a lot of work on that, made some things happen. There's now a turn only and a turn, left, right turn only and a left turn only lane there. Uh, I just wanted to say thank you, Mr. Lawyer, for your work on that. There's a lot of people who are going to really appreciate that. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you so much, and thank you to, um, Mr. Lawyer and the Public Works team. Um, Council President Freeman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, actually started tonight with only like one thing on my list, and as, as everyone's talking, and I've been, uh, adding to my list, so, uh, Sunday's Mother's Day, so happy Mother's Day to, um, all the moms and moms-to-be's in our community. Um, I said this last month, and I'll continue to say it, please slow down in the residential areas, cars are going extremely fast. Uh, there's children out playing, there's animals out, people are walking, dogs, and so just be aware, we may not have a lot of traffic out, but we need to abide by the, um, speed zones that are posted, especially in our residential area, and I have reached out, um, to ask for the speed trailer in a couple areas in my walks where I'm really, uh, seeing several cars on multiple nights at different times going, um, beyond the current speed. Continue to support our local businesses, I'm just impressed with everyone, um, supporting our local businesses as I drive by around dinnertime or even past dinner, lunchtime, everyone is really trying to support our businesses in town, and so I know they appreciate it as well. We will not be having the Planning Commission meeting next week, um, due to our current situation, so thank you, Nate, for the early notice on that. Uh, echoing, uh, Delight Street, I, um, I was talking to the mayor, and we were talking about that project, and I specifically, uh, went out of my way yesterday to drive down there, so it's nice, and it will be really nice to see all ages utilize the new paving there on Delight. Can say we do walk through the McNary parking lot, and it's nice to see progress, um, in there, and I'm sure everyone will be, will love to get that back to, uh, normal. And, uh, budget, one of my favorite times is next week, Monday and Tuesday night at six. Uh, everyone has your, uh, budget package from Tim, and I would encourage citizens to review our budget, and please provide comments or questions if you have them. Again, this is, uh, your city and your budget document, so we ask for your input. And I will echo, um, Councilor Smith on the Charter Review Committee. Uh, the committee members have, um, really taken to heart our charter for this city and looked at all the options. Also, our city attorney, Shannon Johnson, and his, um, assistant, Tammy, have really worked really, really hard to ensure they have captured every comment that the committee has made, and ensure that we have the information for each of our meetings to be prepared and ready to move forward. And tomorrow night is, um, our meeting for the committee to make the final recommendation that will go to City Council for review and, um, public testimony. I know we had, um, a couple people testify at our public, uh, Zoom meeting a couple weeks ago. We also, I just want to reiterate that we'll have additional time for public testimony, uh, when this does come to council, so if people are feeling that they weren't able to do that, there are still opportunities for that. And thank you, Madam Mayor, that's it.
All right, thank you very much. Um, I can get Council Herrera's unmute, can, can we go to that? Council Herrera, can you hear me?
I can hear you good, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, go for it, sir.
I don't know what I may say, because I'm probably going to repeat something.
That's okay.
I just want, uh...
Yeah, go ahead, Roland, you're working fine through your computer, go ahead. Yeah, no, Roland, Roland, it just froze up, we're going to do it through the cell phone, okay? So just do your report now. Go ahead, Roland.
I'm going to be stubborn today.
Yeah, mute, mute your audio in your Zoom feed, you're just going to do speaker through Kathy's speaker here. You there, Roland? Hold your phone close to your mouth, Roland.
Okay. So a couple of things that I know are very important to Council Herrera, number one would be the census, and to make sure that people do get on and fill it out, there's a big blitz right now going on, uh, that was going on over the weekend, and I know that this is a topic that is near and dear to Council Herrera's heart, to make sure that people participate in the census. And, um, I was, uh, it was a pleasure to be part of the Latino Action Committee Scholarships with him, and to... scholarships with him, and to honor so many of our students. And, um, uh, Counselor Herrera, we'll work on your audio to make sure that you, um, can get through next time or, uh, find some alternatives. So, and if you want to text me anything that I forgot, um, I have my phone handy. I'd be happy to make sure that that gets through to folks. So I just have a couple of things to add, and that would be the Salem-Kaiser Area Transportation Studies, SCATS, did meet on the 28th in a virtual meeting. Uh, we adopted the Unified Work Plan for 2020. That's going to define the work that we're doing for our projects in our SCATS area. That would be Kaiser, Salem, Turner, Marion County, and Polk County, portions thereof. Um, we also received allocation of some funds that ODOT had been, uh, withholding prior, and we'll be able to use those funds for finishing projects as well as making sure we have enough planning funds going forward, since there are some questions about the level of funding that we're going to be receiving over the next several months, and that could impact the funds coming in for projects. A couple of people mentioned the, uh, League of Oregon Cities Conference Calls. They've been happening on Fridays, and they've been very helpful to make sure that, uh, the city councilors, commissioners, and mayors throughout Oregon are able to stay connected with, uh, representatives from the governor's office and from Emergency Management and Oregon Health Sciences University. I want to thank Counselor Reed for bringing up mental health issues. This is something I've been pressing, uh, the button on very hard, because we all are seeing within ourselves, our families, and our friends, the impact that all of this has had in increasing stress, anxiety, uh, post-traumatic stress, and other very significant mental health needs throughout people in our community. I have a phone meeting tomorrow morning with, um, I believe it is Robert Allen with the, uh, Oregon Health, uh, Oregon Health Authority, OHA, uh, Behavioral, uh, Health Director, and this was arranged for me by Jody Christensen, who is our Regional Solutions, uh, representative for our region. I want to thank Jody for arranging that meeting, and I look forward to reporting to all of you what steps are going to be, uh, put forth to help us and help our neighbors in our communities with what we need for mental health resources coming from the state. Um, let's see. Oh, um, somebody did mention about businesses opening, and Colby's, uh, down at Kaiser Village did open for food takeout this weekend. Cafe Yum is opening tomorrow, uh, for food takeout. Once again, looking forward to that. And Copycats in Kaiser reopened today. We have businesses opening, they're finding the way forward, and I want to thank all of you who have been so supportive of our businesses. The businesses in Kaiser are part of our Kaiser family, and family takes care of family. So thank you to the Kaiser Chamber, to all of you, the people who live here, and the business owners who live and invest in our community that are making Kaiser continue to move forward and be strong for one another.